Okay. Carbon. Um. Hmm. Okay, so. Hello?
Hi, Ed.
How you doing?
Good. How you doing?
Good.
Good. Looks like Tony's here.
Yep, I see him. Saying, we got, oh, six fifty-four. It's Tony you set up? Oh, you're mute. See if I can unmute you. Can I unmute you?
I muted myself.
All right, good.
Yeah, I muted myself when I, after I said hello. Yeah, I'm set up. I'm gonna go right to it now. You're here.
Now, we got five minutes.
Yep.
Hope everybody's staying cool.
Ah.
Water seems to be, yeah, water seems to be a big thing. I'm, I think everybody's wells are dropping.
This afternoon, for the first time since we moved into the, into the house, the outside thermometer hit ninety degrees. It's the first time in ten years. The highest it previously got was eighty-nine point nine. We actually made ninety.
Geez, where do you live? In a, in a cave?
Well, I live, well, I'm back about three hundred feet and there's trees on three sides. And so the trees keep the temperature down a bit.
It sure does, because we hit ninety-five.
No, we don't. We don't get, never get that high. Okay, here's, okay, there's Ray.
Hi.
Hello.
Yeah, we hit ninety-five, too, I think. Let's see. Yeah, it gets up there. Today, today was almost ninety-nine.
Wow.
But it wasn't, it's in partial sun, so.
Yeah.
May not be exactly the right temperature.
Now, mine is under my back porch, so it's in the shade. Your, your solar should be doing well. There's no rain. It's all sunshine.
Yeah, it has been doing really well. As a matter of fact, my electric bill was nine dollars and thirty-nine cents. Typically, it would have been air conditioner never shutting off. It probably would have been three hundred and fifty bucks.
Yep.
I'm not complaining. We got Terry. I think Terry's joined us.
There's Terry, yeah.
All right, we're just waiting for Bill and Stan, possibly Jim.
Is Munir coming?
Oh, by the way, I just got an email. We have a new member, alternate member.
Yeah, he was appointed the last meeting, Jeremy Norris.
Yeah, is he gonna attend?
I don't know. I know he's on, he's on iCompass and his, his name is misspelled. I'll get Christina to correct it.
Yeah, I need to. Roxanne sent me an email, but I, I may have filed it away.
Yeah, he may not have gotten the, the letter from whoever comes from Fred or, or Linda, whoever sends it out now.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't found it, but I imagine I stuck it away here in the folder. Don't want to lose that. Yeah, I don't, it's good to have.
Oh, here he is. Our new person is here, Jeremy.
Hello.
Hi there.
Okay.
If I'd answered that question, our new person is here. Welcome.
Thank you.
Odd way to start. Ray's here. I see something. It's a good thing Ray's in.
Good.
Yeah, I don't see my picture, but I see everybody else's.
Hey, when I look at you, Ray, I always see a big dark background anyway.
Usually I'm told I carry a black cloud anyhow, so.
Yeah, I'm glad you're here, because I'm sure there're gonna be some questions today.
I gotta go.
Jim, this way, I have not received any, Bill usually tells me he's not gonna show up, so I hate, we got another minute. I have no, no email. Maybe I better check my texts. Where's my phone? No text, so I'm assuming he's gonna show up. I, I mean, the reason for getting Bill on board is we're gonna be trying to do a definitive on this RFQ on service, so. And I know he was supposed to be reviewing it, and Sharon, if you've got it, looked at it, I did give a summary of what my perceptions were.
I also did, they, it was sent to me, so I did get it.
Yeah, good. Yeah, that, unfortunately, the two of them, two of them are just incomplete. Don't have the, they didn't, they didn't quote them what we asked for, so I'm not sure what we're gonna do. According to Bill, that's it. They're disqualified, but. I don't know. That means it's seven o'clock. Nope. Give him another, let's give him another few seconds here.
Yeah, give him another minute or so.
Yeah. Yeah, just what I mentioned, the agenda's kind of funky. We got old business, new business on the same item. I don't know how that confusion, that's probably my fault. Anyway, all the attachments are there under new business. At least they have the business, because there are new attachments.
Yeah, I think I found them.
Yeah. You want to make sure everybody had, had access to them. No, I haven't seen anybody, oh, what's this? I suppose I could give Bill a text. Let me, let me send him a text.
Yeah, go ahead, Ed.
All right, so I sent him a text, see if, see if he responds, but he does, he does. I didn't get an email from Stan either. Stan, no, Stan's not on either.
No, Stan's not, Munir's not.
No, Munir's here.
Is he?
Oh, no, he's not. You're right.
Yeah.
So we have one, two, three.
So we have five at this point.
Yeah, we, we have a quorum. We can do votes.
Well, let me know when you're ready to go. It's gonna take me a minute to adjust the roster on iCompass.
Yeah, we will, we need, we need for Bill to send me a. Yeah. What if he's doing his aderotic, his camping trip? I'm not getting anything, so we might as well start. Maybe Bill will send me a text in the middle of this.
What, what do you need, Ed? I'm on.
Oh, you're there.
All right. All right, give me, give me a second here, Ed, to, yeah, all right, give me a second to do the roster and I'll tell you.
Yeah, I sent you a text, Bill.
Oh, let me check.
Hey, you gonna attend the meeting?
Yeah, I'm attending the meeting.
Good.
I wind up delivering them, clock was slow, so I sit in there thinking I got five more minutes.
Munir's on.
I'm almost done here, but you're here, just a second.
Yeah, just kind of explain to our new guy Jeremy that he's got to get into the town minute system, and it's not as easy as clicking a button.
Yeah.
You know, over the years, we've had our interesting experiences with it.
Yeah, I just got the, I just got the packet in the mail today, so I didn't know that.
Yeah, yeah, be careful.
What's going on till I go home from work, so.
Yeah, that's all right.
Dug into any of it, yes.
Yeah, don't, don't worry about that. It's just that if you, if you want to load them on your computer, you can, but good luck. We there?
Oh, give me about thirty seconds. And I think I'll be ready. All right, so we know that Stan's not here and Munir's not here. Yeah, and Jim Ball's not here, right?
No, Munir, Munir's here. I see him.
Oh, all right.
Munir's here.
Okay, so that's gonna hurt. Give me, give me another second then. I gotta keep playing with this thing. It's a mess. I have to jump back and forth from one screen to another. Roll call is the most difficult part of this. If I don't do it right, it's gonna record all the, all the votes incorrectly.
I agree with you, Tony. I hate.
Yeah, it's hard to, it's hard to fix. You know, once, yeah, once you screw it up, it, oh, it's hard to go back in and change how it, how it took place.
I know. I have one more box to check, I think. Yeah, I wish it would, I wish it would just do it on the same screen, but it doesn't, so it forces me to jump back and forth.
Yeah.
All right, so Terry's here, Munir is here, Jeremy is here, he's not a voting member. So I think we're gonna be okay.
All right, so I'm gonna.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm gonna call the Town of Legerd, Connecticut Water Pollution Control Authority, regular meeting to water. Roll call is obviously Tony Capone, Natufic, Terry Jones, Sharon Mardicki, and myself, Ed Lynch, with our new alternate Jeremy Norris behind us, and we have our town councilman, Bill Soms. And we have our Groton Utilities Representative Ray Valentini. Um, okay, we'll dispense with that pledge. I don't see any residents or property owners on.
I just note, I just officially note that I am the voting, I'm appointed as a voting member.
Yes.
I've already done that.
Yeah, Tony Capone will be, yes, you are a voting member tonight. Other, so I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say, motion out to approve the minutes of twenty-third June, two thousand twenty.
So moved.
So moved by Sharon. Are there any corrections or revisions or? Um, I've looked at, I, I didn't see any. Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none. Um, operations report. Commissions and correspondence. All right, so we're continuing with the leak detection. I've not heard an update. I, I'm assuming, Ray, that they're having no problems with the leak detection.
No, they, they should be done in a couple of weeks. So far, what they're doing is, he's bouncing back and forth between Groton and Legerd, so we get a preliminary report. There's nothing, nothing big in Legerd's area right now. It might be a service or something, but we'll get the report probably end of the month, I would think.
All right, excellent.
Ed, any question?
Yeah.
Why is you dismantling the Gail's ferry tank?
Well, that, oh, this is, I think this is an error.
I hope so.
Yeah, it's, I think he's talking about the, talking about the.
That one.
He's talking about the Gallup Hill tag, not that, I did, I actually did pick that up. I'm glad you brought that up. Yeah, that has to be fixed. That's, we're not doing the Gail's ferry. But we are, we are trying to, we're trying to dismantle the, the tank and Gallup Hill. Okay, I've not received anything on the service correspondence. The agent report is still showing people are paying their bills even during COVID. Uh, I don't see, and, you know, it's, it's a little higher, but on the coverage, it's not that bad. So I hope I'm interpreting that correctly. We did get a hundred and twenty thousand, almost a hundred and twenty thousand dollars revenue June, so. Okay, now, we're gonna go to the budget. Yes.
Ed, whoever's logged in is the Town of Legerd. There's a tremendous amount of background noise coming from their mic. If they could please mute.
Yeah, I don't know who that is. Everybody seems to be muted here. Yeah, I don't see, but I'm looking at, the screen is showing me they're all muted, so I don't know. You're right, I did hear some background.
I keep seeing mic voids.
I don't know where it's coming from. It's not coming from me. All right, well, let's, let's, how is it now? It's quiet?
Seems to be.
Yeah, it's, it's easy.
Christina, if, if you're on, are you logged in twice?
I don't know.
Yeah, I think she comes on, but then she just disappears and then comes back at the end of the meeting and shuts it down.
Yeah, I don't think she's even there. You're right.
Right.
Okay, let's try.
Quiet now.
Yeah, it is quiet now.
But she's muted as well, so.
All right, um, so the water budget, and Terry and Sharon, I have some questions on this. If you look at the water budget carefully, we purchased more water than we budgeted, and we got paid that money. And of course, the difference, the difference is quite a bit of money that we make when we sell more water, because we only, our expense is only the raw water. So I'm asking the question, where does that money go? If you take a look at the budget, and it shows that we had budgeted nine hundred, I gotta get the right number, we had budgeted nine hundred and fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and forty dollars. However, we received one million, one hundred and fifty-four thousand, two thirty-four. Now, obviously, some of that paid for the additional water that we purchased. But that is only, that only comes out to thirty plus twenty, fifty thousand dollars. Whereas we probably gained about a hundred thousand dollars in the budget. Where's that money going? Does anybody know?
The surplus.
Right. But I don't see a line item from year to year of accumulated surplus.
Kind of like the CNR fund account that you never see how much we have put aside from year to year.
We have a CNR, but, and I'm assuming, is that what you're saying? They put it in the CNR, the capital?
No, it's, it's, but it's an account similar to that. The CNR doesn't appear on.
Right.
Profit and loss statement.
Yeah, I think, I hope Sharon's right. I mean, we have asked Ian in the past to show us fund balances periodically, and we still haven't seen those.
As you know, Terry, our costs for purchasing water and what we charge for, it's, you know, we actually have to pay for contract and things. So we, we would get additional monies if we sell more water, right? And because the variable cost is got a fixed number, and then we have our fixed cost. What I noticed in this budget is that there's a hundred thousand dollars, and that's, that's a lot of money that, that, that I would, would, hopefully, we'd be able to count for, because we do have projects coming up that we would like to spend in order to help the town and, and our ratepayers. You know, one example would be, as we will discuss later, the sewer, you know, study, getting a sewer line from the Legerd Center to the sewer facility, the water treatment facility we have, and I, you know, those monies, I'm just hoping we can account for and then go to our finances and say, hey, look, you know, we had, we made a little extra money this year. We would like to do this. We'd like to tear down the tank or the bunkers or some other kind of thing to help the town and its liability. So I, I'm, I'm just pointing this out. I, I guess I will make a communication to Ian and say, you know, am I looking at this right? It looks like we have an additional hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I mean, it says one hundred and ninety-six thousand, eight ninety-four. And then we had to spend an additional fifty thousand for water, forty-nine thousand, one twenty-nine.
But what is the bottom line? I don't have that spreadsheet up. What's the bottom line? Say we're good for. When you go all the way down, you got your income, and then at the bottom's your expenses, and there's a number at the bottom.
Correct.
Is that number over a hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah, it's actually two hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, so that's the amount of money that we took in that we didn't spend, and that would go into a fund balance, that would go into surplus. Because we're kept separate from the town, there's an account somewhere that that money's sitting in.
Okay. So I have to find out what that account balance is. Where is it? What, how much is, I mean, there should be two hundred and four thousand at least.
It should be more than that, because we, we usually come out ahead most years.
Yeah. All right, I don't, I don't wanna, I don't want to waste a lot of time on that. It's just that I, I make an inquiry as to where that, where, where this, where's that money going? And, and can we get some kind of status on it occasionally, particularly at the end of the year? Um, the sewer budget, of course, is not as great. Yes, go ahead, go.
It's a good question. The, the town budget works the same way. We don't see the fund balance. It doesn't show up in the budget. You don't see the, the balance on the accounts. You see what we're spending, what we're bringing in as revenue, but you don't see account balances.
Right. But isn't that something?
Until the audit, it shows up in the audit.
Yeah. Yeah, you can find it in the audit report.
Didn't Marcia Hancock give you a, like a monthly fund balance report? We used to get that routinely.
No, I don't get one. I don't, I've never seen one.
No, I know we're not getting as WPCA, but the Town Council Finance Committee, I would think, would see a fund balance report monthly.
Yes, we used to.
All right, well. Yeah, that's something we have to work out. I, I'd like to also point now that we've, we've kind of taken some of the burden out of the sewer budget for the service agreement, because they are very much, not in the red by much, but I'm seeing like a minus twelve thousand dollars. So they're losing money. And water's gaining money. So that's, that's the other challenge we have. Uh, and it's because I believe it's the electrical cost is not the savings we thought we were gonna get, and there's some other costs, too.
Ed, I, I still don't understand what's going on with electricity. Can, do you, do you understand that?
Yeah, it's pretty clear. So with this, the electrical cost didn't go up as high as everybody thought it would, so because of the fuel costs are pretty low. So we're, although I think this is gonna change, because with this pandemic, a lot of people can't pay their electric bills, and I hopefully it's not gonna fall on the ones who can pay their electric bills and will get higher electric bills. But anyway, the difference is about between six and a half cents from ever source versus eight point one cent, I think, for the solar. So there's a little different, there's a differential there, Terry. And, and so we're, you know, we're not budget, we're, either that or we're just not budgeting it right. The electric is just not quite the same. It's not really bad. It's not like, you know, twelve thousand dollars, but it is a few thousand different.
What, what I don't understand is, are we just not saving as much as we thought we were gonna save, so we are higher than our budget? Or has us actually gone up?
No, I think it's just we, we're not saving up we thought we would.
It's okay.
It's a budgeting thing, that's all. Um, but there are other expenses that were occurring. There's, there's, there's medical expenses. You know, there, there are some other things that are impacting the sewer budget. Um, you know, there, there are some other things that are impacting the sewer budget and we, we, we don't have. People are, are very cautious about using water that have sewer because they know their sewer costs would go up. You know, so even though you'd think, well, they're using more water, we should be able to get more sewer. It's not, it's not the same. It's not the same as the other thousand, I think, the other thousand customers we have. So we have what, four hundred and fifty customers in sewer? We have fourteen hundred and fifty in water? You know, there's a thousand people that don't have sewer and so they're only paying for the water. Um, so if there's no other, uh, oh, and which Banks did give, he did give a, finally we got a report. Uh, I don't know if anybody read it. There were some issues with blow a three that have been fixed electrically. I think there was loose ground wires. Uh, we are doing duty on nitrogen numbers. Even though Steve said that during the COVID, a lot of people went home and we saw some very high rates coming into the plant. They're actually coming down now. And, you know, I wonder if we, uh, put meters on all our waste treatment in the United States, we could probably do a better economic analysis than, than any of the economists. Just by looking at how much sewer is going through them.
Sounds like a blend.
But anyway, it's going down, but we were able to handle it. And the good news is the, we didn't, we never exceeded our nitrogen, uh, state mandated nitrogen numbers. So caduce for them. They, they're running that plant very well. And it's running well, according to Steve. He called me the other day, said they're running great. So I probably jinxed it. Um, okay. If no other questions on the correspondence, although I did recently, uh, let me just read it to you, um, if you guys are interested. There's a webinar. If you want to get your certification on discharge mining reports, you can attend a webinar. Uh, not sure if, I'm sure that Steve will be attending it, but I don't need to. All right. Um, I have three motions for, um, invoice. Going to make, uh, one and I just, unless there's any particular interest, I'll make the invoice on all three of them. And that now we can have a discussion. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the payment of utilities invoice one eight seven 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 in the amount of seven thousand, nine hundred and sixty seven dollars and ninety six cents. That's all meter purchase. These meter purchases are going into new housing. And if you want to see how many houses are going up in Legerd, go to Flatbrook. They're, they're going at those houses and also Meadows. Those houses are growing up like mushrooms. I'd like to also make a motion to approve the payment of utility invoice one eight seven seven eight of eight hundred and ninety six dollars and sixty two cents for the tour. And finally, a motion to approve the payment to DEP invoice, DEP five thirty seven one eight, the amount of four hundred and seventy dollars for diversion. Second, is that your second?
Yes, second.
All right. So the meter, the meter, the meter cost for eight thousand dollars is pretty flat, sorry. If you want to know the details, I have them here. It's like they purchased ten meters. Uh, actually, that's incorrect. They purchased twenty five meters. The electrical work, Ray, what, what was that for? Was that for?
That, that was for Steve, uh, down at the plant.
Okay.
He calls our electrician to come down.
Yeah, I think that may have been related to the blower. I'm not sure. I don't, I don't have the specifics, but.
I think he said a, there's a level sensor and some repairs there. And one was when we demoed loft this, uh, we brought him down to dump, to pull the wires out of the, uh, control panel so the well drill can remove the well.
Wow, that goes all the way to, to that plant. Huh.
Yeah, it's, it's run off of the, uh, electricity, whatever you had in there. We wanted to make sure, you know, I know it's dead, but we didn't want to wreck anything in there.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay. I, I understand where that came from. All right. Um, and of course the D E P is for water diversion consumptive holders. Uh, I think this is the, isn't this, this is the assessment, isn't it?
This is, uh, you'll get, as a matter of fact, we just got a number in the office today. Uh, one thing about the state, they still move them out. Uh, this is, I think this one is, one of them is for the, uh, diversion permit coming to you guys and the other one, uh, from us, from Legerd. And the other one goes from Legerd, uh, Montville and us. That's, uh, but I, I think that's the one I might've got. This is between us and you for your diversion permit to send water to Legerd.
All right. So, uh, any discussions? No? Well, if no discussions, then, um, I'll vote on all three invoices. Uh, all those, uh, in favor of approving these invoices, paying these invoices signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Abstentions? Hearing none? It's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, now we get to, uh, well, no, we're not quite there. We have a backflow prevention test result. Not very exciting. Looks like, looks like it passed.
Yeah, I don't even know why that's in there.
Neither do I. Uh, we also have the quality water quality report. This is important to, to view, but we're all within spec. Um, although I'm always interested in seeing manganese being in the middle of the range. And I didn't know we had bromide. Just surprised Dow Chemical is in here mining it. Uh, it's an interesting story about how Dow formed because of bromides. Uh, and then the total organic solids, that's expected. And so that's in the reservoir. And then if you take a look at the, what's actually coming out of the treatment facility, it's pretty, everything's within spec. At least what I can read. Well, one thing I don't see is, uh, Ray, why don't they give the pH? I don't see the pH.
It's not real, it's something that we have to put in the report. We, we could put almost everything in here. You need another couple pages of, uh,
Oh, is that right?
Yeah, there's a lot, a lot of stuff that we end up doing that they just, this is part of the state's, uh, what they want to see. So we have to meet their objectives. Um, but if you want to know pH, they can always find out for you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm curious as to what the pH is coming in, uh, and going out. Um, we always wondered how acidic that water might be.
Yeah, it's not, it's not, uh, it's not acid, but I'll get you the pH.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, there's no other questions on the water quality. Does anyone have any questions?
No.
Well, okay. Now we go to the bid. Now you saw my preliminary comment. We got three bids. Um, and they, they, uh, did not, two of the bids did not fulfill the total bid requirement of metering, reading the meters and running the Koozie, um, software system. Now, one of them had their own system, which was fine, um, but they didn't read meters. Uh, I did some estimates of what that would cost and it seemed like the cost, there was no real beneficial cost, uh, between any of the bids, um, you know, based on my estimates. But Bill, did you have a chance to take a look at that?
I did. Um, so one, one was close to the, uh, Groton Utilities bid.
Right.
Um, I, I didn't quite get that they weren't reading meters, but what they were doing is reading meters remotely. And they don't provide walk-in service because their office is in Plainville, Connecticut.
Right.
Uh, but they were, they were close, but I, I, reading the bid, it didn't appear that all of the costs of providing services were included. The other one was, uh, much lower than Groton Utilities and they did not provide, um, metering services. So, uh, that, that was my analysis. Neither one of them met the bid requi, the minimum bid requirements. Uh, and it were only those three.
So given that, I mean, now the process here is that we, we do a, a recommendation vote to the town councils. Is that correct? And then I'm, I'm actually looking for the process here because uh, Marsha said she wanted to get this done right away. And I said, well, I think we have to have the town council agreement, right? And I know the mayor.
I don't believe it's on our agenda. I think it's in, in your purview.
Oh, it's in our purview? Okay.
I believe so. I, right, right, Taran?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Um, the only thing you would come to the town council for is if you didn't get three bids, you'd have to come to the town for a bid waiver.
Okay.
Um, but it's within the WPCA's purview. If you have three bids to select the best value for the downtown, you don't have to choose the cheapest, but you do have to vote on and accept the best value for the ratepayers.
Okay, having said that, uh, what, uh, what's the opinion of the commissioners on this after reviewing this? Anybody have an opinion? Besides Bill and myself?
Groton Utilities.
Yeah, but my opinion is the best value for our, uh, ratepayer customers is continued service by, uh, Groton Utility.
Correct. My opinion as well.
Yeah, I have the same opinion. What about you, Tony?
Yeah, I'm switching back and forth. Yes, I agree as well. I was really busy getting ready, trying to write the motion.
Okay, um, Maner?
Yes, I will go for Groton Utility.
Okay, so it seems like I have an unanimous opinion that we should go with Groton Utility. So I will make a motion to accept the bid of Groton Utilities. Now, I don't, I don't think the motion has to include the cost because it's actually two years. And Ray, Ray, one of the things that we found is that our operations contract doesn't end with you for two years.
Yeah, I did. I thought, because after I got that memo that this was out and I said, I, I thought it was next year. But, uh, yeah, it was different years. I don't know why, but.
All right. So, yeah, so that we, we'd still want to get these together. So we're, so the service contract is for two years, which I appreciate Groton Utilities getting, they're acting together, getting it to us right away. Um, yes, go ahead.
I seconded it.
Oh, you seconded. Okay, so. So I, I think we've had our discussions, uh,
Yeah, I had just one question. We, we, our motion is to accept the bid for services for two years?
Yes, for two years.
Okay, I'm just making sure I get that in there.
That Groton Utilities has proposed.
Ed, please specify the period of performance.
Uh, the period of performance is actually, it's going to be one less. It's going to be the first of August, two thousand twenty to the first of August, two thousand twenty two.
Well, thirty first of July, right?
I'm sorry, correct. I, I, I corrected. Yes, to the first of July, two thousand twenty two. Sorry.
Thirty first of July, right?
Yes, correct. So.
Thirty first, okay.
Yep. So.
Go ahead. Accept the bid for services from, from, from Groton Utilities for, for, um, August first, twenty twenty to July thirty first, twenty twenty two.
Yes.
Okay.
And that's the same as the end date of the operations contract. Is that correct?
Correct.
I think, no, I thought we ended July, uh, first, uh, well, June thirtieth and then July first, that's the new year.
Well, okay, so we want to amend that to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty two.
Right.
Yeah, and that's, that's the service period. And we actually have the, we've actually got the, you know, uh, the whole bid on that. So, so we know what it's going to cost us for two years. Um, well, if, if there's no further discussion, um, I will, um, take a vote. All those in favor of the motion to accept Groton Utilities service bid signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, any nays? Hearing none? Uh, any abstains? Hearing none? It's unanimous. Thank you. Um, I, no other business. Oh, wait a minute, what happened? There was, what? We don't have, okay, somehow that got missed. I, I did have another piece of business, but we can discuss that next meeting. We're not discussing that tonight. Uh, I, I won't make it a secret. I'd like to start an RFQ to, uh, get a engineering firm to do a study for a sewer line between Legerd Senate, Legerd Center and, uh, the Highlands Waste Treatment Facility. I'll, I'll leave that for another, for another meeting. Okay. Uh, and if there's no objections, do I hear? Okay, everybody. Thank you. And, uh, have a good, safe and cool. All right. Take care.
Everybody come on?
All right. Good job, Ed.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. Thank you.